I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Any citizens are going to be heard. Hearing none. Number four, consideration of possible action on approving minutes for February 14th, 2020.
So I'll make the motion sacred.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion and corrections? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will oppose. The motion carries. Number five, consideration of possible action on receiving a bi-month report from David.
Highlights for your reference for the last couple of months.
Thank you, David Ball.
Thank you, sir.
All we will accept a bi-month report.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just have one suggestion is maybe we can have David, until we get through our FEMA reimbursements and that sort of stuff, maybe monthly, give us an update on where we're at on that. And the 12 and a half percent from the state matching funds for FEMA. I think that's something that should interest all of us. I know I'm interested in a periodic update on where we're at on that. Can we add that to the calendar where we can do that once a month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's all I have, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Number six, consideration of possible action on approving ODOT claim for DCP midstream in amount of $186,859.10 for utility relocation on East of Road project.
Those are gas pipe? Yes, DCP. They had all the mess up going across Blue to Road. Which with all the utilities being moved, is that project at 80% ready for funding for construction?
Maybe we approve the payment. I will second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Seven, consideration of possible action on approving resolution establishing safety-sensitive positions and drug testing procedures as approved by the majority of the elected officials of Logan County.
You don't need to... I forwarded out the email I received from Lowell on this yesterday, asking this item to be tabled. The further information that came this morning was the last full policy that we approved, which was in May of 19, had actually been updated yet again in August of 19. I was not aware of that. Lowell's emailed this morning. We need to address implementing the most current drug policy, which is the August of 19. I've emailed it to you all this morning and incorporate this safety sensitive. So as such, table today until we can get all that done and bring it back.
So I'd like to make a comment on that. I agree that this needs to be tabled, but it doesn't need to be just tabled from the Board of Commissioners. It needs to go back to the entire group of elected officials because now we're talking about changing what we had previously approved as a change to the employee policy book.
It will.
If I'm reading this correctly, and I have a problem with that, but we need to have everybody involved if we're going to change employee policies. You taught me that a long time ago.
I included in the email I sent this morning, you may not have had a chance to see it, that when I was passing this information, that we needed to redo the full policy, that that special meeting of county officers will be called when I have all the info.
I just saw a special meeting. I thought it would be of the Board of Commissioners. Excuse me. Yes, I knew we tabled this until such time we can get all the information and come back to also the elected officials.
All right. Is all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. You want to go ahead and do eight? You want to hold off on eight?
No, I think eight is still appropriate.
I agree.
Consideration of possible action to select company to provide direct testing services to Logan County.
What was the one that we had talked about earlier at the county officers meeting?
The quote that we've got, Monty's been working on, is with ANJ Services.
Okay. But nothing's changed since we looked at that. As county officers, I move we approve changing to ANJ Services.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. So if the board don't have a problem, I might combine nine and 10. Seems like it's the same road. Y'all have an objection to that?
Nope, no objection.
So number nine would be consideration and possible action on approving resolution accepting the following donations to District Two for gravel to be placed on Red Cedar Road and Oak Valley Drive.
I'll make the motion to accept both these?
Okay. Item nine and 10 is different people donating money, but it's the same location. I have a motion and I will second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Item 11, consideration of possible action on approving resolution accepting $1,000 donation from Darrell Riggs to District Two for gravel on Simpson Avenue.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Twelve, consideration of possible action on approving resolution accepting $2,000 donation from White Star Petroleum to District Three for gravel on Bryant's north of County Road 65. I had an oil company call me and they'd like to put some gravel up on that road and they'd rather make a donation so I could use it as a write-off. So sweet.
Well, I move we approve that. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Thirteen, consideration of possible action on resolution accepting $663 and $0.26 donation from Mickey Anderson to District Two for Colbert.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Ford is braiding right through this, haven't crashed?
Mm-hmm.
And where was I?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, consideration of possible action on approving resolution donating various printers and computers from Treasurer's Office to get through public schools.
Break the motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just, there's no sensitive information on those computers that are going to the school.
Not to my knowledge. I can verify that with Sherri. She's out due to a family emergency.
And no issues there. I just want to make sure that no sensitive information... Treasurer shouldn't have any that's not publicly available anyway. So, but yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries.
So they all keep individual personnel records, you know, on some systems?
Fifteen, consideration of possible action on bringing lease purchase agreement between Cashin Fire Department and Chief Fire and Safety County in the mountain.[623.83][624.13]$268,222.80 for a 2020 E1 rescue pumper truck.
Just to refresh your memory, Cashin Fire Department came to the board. It's been several months earlier in 19 that they, to order this truck. They put a cash down payment of $200,000. The balance of the $268 is what's being leased out. It's being... Chief Fire was the vendor who is going to assign the lease to Welch State Bank. I have two sets of documents. The first one is for the board and all these others are for Monty's chair.
So the Cashin Fire Department, they're up and running?
They are up and running. We are back in business with them.
Sweet. Boy, that's an expensive truck, $407,000. I don't believe that.
It was a new build.
At least it's not a ladder truck.
Welcome back.
Have fun.
Toys.
Or more. About three things.
City Tulsa just got five brand-new lighter trucks.
Okay.
I just got my memory this week.
City Tulsa has more people that live on one street than is in all of Logan County.
Probably would have had to get five of them. Troy, does it have a chief or an acting chief?
They actually have an appointed chief.
Appointed chief?
Yes. Clayton Hill was appointed. It's been a few weeks ago, but yes.
Do we have a motion?
Not that I heard.
I didn't entertain a motion.
I also motion.
So Marvin made a motion and second. Mike seconds. Any discussion on this? The expensive fire truck. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries.
Since we already approved it, I mean, we already talked about it when they were here.
Correct. It wasn't expensive. I'm sorry. $800 truck. Half an $800 truck.
Item sixteen, consideration of possible action to replace flagpole at the courthouse. Troy's got some quotes for y'all.
Troy, I thought you had that. Okay, so in trying to replace, and Monty, I thank you for taking, picking this up because you have now learned the challenge of dealing with a flagpole company.
Yes.
Who would have thought? The 50-foot pole to replace is going to be over $10,000. The 35-foot pole to hold two flags, they're going to waiver their, give us an extended on the warranty because they don't really want us to have two flags. If we fly two flags, no bigger than three by five, comes in at just under $3,000 installed, I believe that was. And then, Monty, I think you were going to recommend that we relocate that monument to be able to move that pole into that spot.
You know, one of the issues with the flagpole is the flags, when it's the winds out of the north, that hangs up in the guttering on the courthouse and it keeps the flags where all the time. So what I would like to do is move the monument over by the steps where it probably should be anyway so people can see it. And then we can move the flagpole out away from the courthouse. But that other quote was how much, 26 something?
It was less than three. 27 something, I want to think. I don't know why I don't have it. I'm sorry.
And that was installed. But I failed.
I will mail it out.
How tall?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet?
So it'll be quite a bit shorter than the one that's there, but that also should help maybe keep the flags from hanging up and tearing.
Still a substantial pole.
So to take action today, we probably need to look at the three estimates or what was the lowest bid again?
I can try that.
That 35 footer was...
Like 2,700.
And that's sufficient, Monty, for, you think, for what we need?
Well...
If we move the monument?
I think a 35-foot would look okay there. I mean, the problem with the 50-footer is it's tall. Our flags are so small on a 50-foot pole.
Well, I'm not into spending $10,000 for a flagpole. Hardly even see the thing. Be a lot easier to light at 35 feet, too.
I hate spending $2,700, but...
Yeah.
Now, this does have nothing to do with the lighting. Once it's in and installed, we'll address that.
I understand. But I'm saying 35 feet is a lot easier to light up than, what, the 50 footer?
So I thought I heard three prices. One was $10,000 or better. One was about $3,000 and then one was 20-something.
The three and the 20-something was, I said less than three.
Okay.
It's tall, one counts.
Yeah, it's tall.
So there are actually two options. One's for the 50 footer and one's for the 35 footer.
Correct.
All right. Then I do move that we do need the flagpole and I'll move that we move the monument and put a 35-foot flagpole on that corner over there.
I'd like to see it sooner than later and it sounds like we'll get that one sooner.
So I made the motion second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries.
I would point out that after it was installed, we need to look at the, or have the electrician come in. The only source of power that's going to make it easy is the video camera is right there on that corner. And if it's okay impossible, that would be where we would put a light off the side of the building because that's our power source.
Got you. Item 17, consideration of possible action on resolving requisition of officers for various...
I have one for the Sheriff's Department and one for Free Fair.
Here's twice me.
What, can I ask the difference of $7,000 of 15 feet of pole? Is that the difference?
I think it's diameter, the internal, the way they install it.
One's pole, one's pipe, probably.
Big gap.
And I imagine the cost to deliver it, they probably use a different type of truck to do a 35 as opposed when you get up to 50 or...
Yeah. I was shocked on the price of the 35 footer. Well, I second $500, but...
Installed. That's back in the nineties.
Eighteen, consideration of possible...
You need action on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make a motion.
I'll second Mike's motion. Any discussion on requisitioning officers?
Uh, none.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Eighteen, consideration of possible action on resolving appointment of receiving officers for various accounts.
I have one for Langston Fire and one for Free Fair.
Did that miss?
Hmm?
Missed that. Yep, okay.
No, no, no. I think you're mixing up. That's Robert Davis, Fire Chief at Langston.
Gina Davis?
Oh, Free Fair, yes. Okay.
I was going to say it says Gina Davis.
We just had several Davises pass through here.
I bet it was real.
I'll second Mark's motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Nineteen, consideration of possible action on improving the following permanent road crossing permits for Cox Cal LLC.
I'll make the motion to accept. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. I guess I got it. No wonder he's all signing on. While Mike's signing that, we could do consideration of possible action on consenting agenda items.
I'll be driving around checking out flagpoles.
I have.
Yeah, that's a...
I tell you what, getting them to call you back is a chore.
Is it Flagpole Company?
It is.
Okay.
And apparently they're very, very busy.
Yeah, okay.
And I would point out, part of the increased cost on this is this, this flagpole at less than $3,020, whatever, has all internal mechanisms. So there's no ropes on the outside to break. There's no plaque in. It's all internal. Consent. Here's payroll.
Get it in, boy. Boy, it's on board.
Might be frozen.
Could be. You never know what you're going to find in those things. Your insurance documents, all sorts of stuff.
Monty, will you have to bust up the concrete or will they do that or is it just come out and pop in? Or how does that work?
Well, we're going to move it from that location.
But moving it, the same location but up from the same location?
Out.
I mean, out, closer to the road?
Right. About where that monument sits. That's why I might move the monument by the steps where, you know, it probably should have been at the start. Can we install the tank man that sits up there and move it up there? I'm thinking so. Maybe we should put that on the agenda for next time. I could probably even get them to ask for that.
Good task, he just... In reference, how tall is the flagpole at the Sheriff's Office, you know?
All the way to the top.
All the way to the top, yeah.
I'm guessing 30.
Yeah.
But I don't know that. Strictly against. So you think we're going to get into a measuring compass?
I'm just seeing how tall that is.
Art's going to be taller than ours if on that.
Oh, high-tall field?
Yeah.
How big are those?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
So...
Both, right? There you go.
Something I did ask the Sheriff's about is fixing them globes and lights in front of the Sheriff's Department. See them all. Jim, I need to get Paul on that. I can. Finding that particular globe might be tough. Any idea where y'all got them at when we built that?
I have to do some research.
Are you back on the light globes?
Yes.
There's a company in Tulsa that carries the globes. I'm assuming that you could get them from them. I forget the name. I looked it up.
Okay.
But I know that there's a place in Tulsa.
So what is an acceptable increase for a first statute and they get promoted to that job?
90%.
90% of what?
Of what they were, man?
It depends on what side of the country, I'm going to question.
That's a way to put me on the spot there, Commissioner.
My apologies, ma'am. My way of attempting to jock is already...
I understand. And I can check some numbers for you and get back with you.
All right. I appreciate that.
Transfer for Coil Fire Department.
Yes. No problem.
Word for you is I received an email from Mike Wolf. It's probably going to be about three weeks for that mulcher attachment.
Oh, boo.
And I spoke to Chris Schroeder because I put an email out because I didn't know if there was a timing issue on that reimbursement. Chris, it's fine. It'll be fine.
As long as it's before the end of the fiscal year.
Right, right. Well, the original that went out, I think, was set April and I knew that that could be an issue. So I did speak... Right, right. Well, the original that went out, I think, was set April, and I knew that that could be an issue, so I did speak with him, we're gonna be fine.
That'll be in, I see.
Mike Wolf, the financial guy?
Mike Wolf from Kirby Smith Machinery.
Oh, different guy, different Mike Wolf.
We bought a mulcher for our...
Right, right. Mike Wolf works with schools and, uh, American paper shit.
You know, it's amazing to me, Beverly's legacy lives on. She sat in for me for one meeting, was able to just scare you right into...
I'm trying to keep that in now, okay. I don't wanna get on Beverly's bad side.
Listen, we still miss her so much, and she's just telling me she's enjoying retirement, doesn't miss us at all, so...
Well, how's that work?
Election board claim for the chairman. Get out your camera.
Oh, I'm a, I'm up behind, too.
Alcoholic beverage tax.
I'll bring to that. Up to 19 grand, how old?
Get to 13,136, press at 1,818.
Much easier to go on OTC's website.
It's not the easiest to navigate if you don't know specifically which one.
And I have to bookmark them when I find them.
That would conclude consent agenda.
I'd entertain a motion for the consent agenda. I'll move, second. Have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. The motion carries. 21, consideration of possible action on proven claims for payment for February 2020. Oil, fire department.
Oil, last.
Slankston, fire department.
I see it.
Singer, fire department.
When you get to District 1, please mute the...
I'll quit.
Yeah.
County assessor.
I don't know that we've got one or two or five, but I'm sure that that'll happen.
Election board.
Uh-oh.
D1.
How's that?
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
I must feel good if these verbalize it. You don't have it coming?
No, I don't, no.
Okay.
D2?
Nope. 33 cents. There's not, it's a penny or a hundred cents.
Yeah.
Auditors, auditors don't care.
SO, SO.
That sounds very close to something.
Is that the under sheriff department?
Yeah.
Is that the under sheriff department?
Yeah, I think this is the under sheriff department here. Invoiced before P.O. Get in, Troy. Ooh, I'll tell the auditor that. It is what it is, brother.
I, I can't say that. I probably haven't actually seen that to an auditor.
We all do.
You know it's...
I guarantee I've had, I've had a great deal of them.
There's always next month.
Do it again. Always something to look forward to, yeah. I move we, uh, approve this.
I'll second.
I have a motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
We have no P. Part payments.
23, any citizens desiring to be heard. Hearing none. Bobby, getting...
Hey, I was very pleased with the DCP relocate. It was initially costing us $550,000 and came in at $186,000. So that was a big bonus to save you some money.
C.I.R.B., yeah.
Awesome. Erica, should have that wrapped up for you pretty quick. It's, it, it was good that we brought her on board. She has municipality experience and has worked with ACOG in the past.
Okay. Would, Bobby, you and I know what we're talking about?
Yes.
Uh, could you kinda go into what, what we're talking, we're talking about, uh, doing the engineering for a traffic light at the corner of Broadway and Charter, uh, at that intersection. It's a very dangerous intersection. I just attended, uh, the meeting with those folks yesterday. And they're looking at ways to reduce the, the safety statistics, the number of deaths and accidents in, in the greater metro area. And one of the ways to do that is through, uh, these types of, uh, safety, uh, projects. And so what we're doing is, uh, I'm, I'm gonna be paying upfront the engineering cost to get this completed so we can score more points on the, on the safety side to put in this, uh, traffic segment at, at that corner. It's very dangerous. We've had several accidents. We just had a motorcycle accident there not too long ago, but we, we've had people killed there, uh, and it's, it's something that isn't, indeed, that needs to be done. And so, again, uh, even though I make fun of the engineers, that they always get paid upfront, uh, before we throw any dirt, uh, this is, this one is really important and I, and I'm gonna go ahead and bite the bullet, so to speak, and pay for it.
That's why they drive them fancy cars.
Them engineers? But, but thank, go ahead, uh...
But yes, your, your best, your best advantage is, is by having experience in getting those ACOG funds to, you know, to best apply for them because they do work with the engineers, as you say, to best suit what you need to get that approved.
Right, so the scoring, scoring high on those templates, the...
Makes a difference.
When they get those safety issues in, uh, yeah, if, we can check all the boxes that are appropriate and get all that stuff done. Uh, hopefully, uh, ODOT won't require a, uh, you guys to fill out all kinds of forms to get information from them on traffic accidents. Their open, open records request was the last time we, we did that. ODOT wanted an open records request from our engineering firm that we had hired as a county to apply for federal grant funds, which made no sense to me, but thank you, guys.
But yes, that's something I think I need to get with Mike on, too, to, to make sure that Loving County can apply for if, you know, as much ACOG funding as possible.
All right.
Also, I've got friends that put up flagpoles for vets for free.
35 footers?
All you got does request.
We, we ain't real check here.
Flagpoles for vets on Facebook. They do, they do flagpoles for free to a vet who requests one. Put them up in their front yard, and they put them with a light pole, with a light on top, solar panel.
Yeah, I'm a vet.
All you got does request one, and they'll put one up. They do about two a week.
What, they do one at the Little Camp warehouse?
35 feet tall.
The 50 foot, the 35, the 50 foot has a lot more foundation structure to support a bigger flag, bigger pole, a lot more stress, so that's why you're seeing a big increase.
He hangs out with engineers, he knows these things.
I hang out with people who install flagpoles for free for vets.
Oh.
All right. Anything else, Bobby?
I'm good.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Under sheriff, you got anything for us today? Sheriff doing all right?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Everything running smooth?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Kudos to Troy Cole. She's an amazing elected official.
Hey.
I'll second that.
That's enough of that. 24, comments, announcements, questions by the board. Mike, you got anything?
Not sure, so no.
Mr. Goodman?
Uh, no, sir. I just, uh, you said you didn't attend the, uh, CED meeting, and did we have any representation there?
Did you go in for me at CED? Did you go to the...
I went to the CED.
Okay, how'd that, how'd that go?
Uh, it went real well. Uh, it was just up and down on just almost every line.
Did, did we get that engineering firm paid again and...
Yes, and, yeah, that's...
That's awesome.
All taken care of. Heck of a meeting quarter. But, yeah, we got that. Uh, Jeffrey says he's been going around to the different, uh, county commissioners' meetings. It's got me introducing myself and everything, and we are on his list to visit, so I met him.
I, I mean, I like Jeffrey, and this is no disrespect to Jeffrey. I don't want him to come up here because I see every time he goes to a county, he charges the CED. For mileage, going to that county, I don't need him to come to Little Camp. I've met him before.
That's, I've met him, too. It's...
All right.
It's, uh...
I mean, that's just my opinion.
So one of the questions, one of the questions that I had, I, I'd heard a rumor that, uh, there was another county that was gonna want to join CED5.
Canadian county.
Was there any action taken on that?
Hmm, no.
Okay.
Was it even discussed?
I don't recall it being discussed.
I didn't say it on the agenda.
I just, well, that never meant anything before.
Yeah, I understand. So I guess, I guess the only question I would have is what y'all's feelings about that county joining CED5?
I think it's up to the CED.
All right.
I as well.
Anything else?
And they do bring money to the CED, so... I have nothing, sir.
Nothing else? Mike, anything else? Troy, was there anything?
Not that I'm aware of. I will get you the further information on that, uh, drug policy as it comes in.
I would consider item 25 in adjournment. Make motion, your second. Whatever. Let's go.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're done.